Good evening, everyone. Good evening. I'd like to call the City of West Bend Common Council and our Veterans Tribute for Monday, November 5th, 2018 to order, and recognize that we do have a full quorum of the Common Council here tonight. And good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for coming tonight. The festivities seem to get bigger and better every year. This is our eighth annual recognition of Veterans Day and honoring our veterans. So again, thanks to all of you for coming. Also, thank you to Lori Winters, her staff here at the Museum of Wisconsin Art. We certainly appreciate them opening up their facilities to us. Thank you, Lori. She's there in the back. Once a year, on Veterans Day, we like to take our Common Council show on the road. So we've been at various schools, MPTC, other locations around the community, and we're very happy to be here tonight at West Bend's very own museum. So with that, I would ask that you'd please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and the Posting of Colors by the West Bend Police Department Honor Guard, followed by the singing of the National Anthem by the Viva Che Choir students tonight. This is Patrick. Patrick, if you'd like to wave to everybody. He has a video tribute that our West Bend Community Cable put together, recognizing -- it's a medley recognizing each branch of the Armed Forces. Thank you, Patrick. Are we okay to continue?
Yep.
Perfect. Now, I'd like to read into the record a proclamation recognizing Veterans Day here in the City of West Bend, and it reads, whereas, "November 11th, 2018 is the 100th anniversary of the agreement between the Allies and Germany to stop fighting during World War I. And whereas, November 11th became known as Armistice Day, which honored veterans of World War I. In 1954, Congress changed the name from Armistice Day to Veterans Day to honor all those who served. And whereas, the City of West Bend is extremely proud of our veterans who have served in all wars of the United States, fought for freedom, and continue the traditions and institutions which have made this nation great. And whereas, in memory of the first Americans who fought with our allies overseas, please join me in recognizing the importance of this 100th anniversary of the end of World War I. Now, therefore I, Craig K. Sedanico, Mayor of the City of West Bend, hereby declare Sunday, the 11th of November, 2018, as Veterans Appreciation Day in West Bend, and I ask all citizens to respect and honor all our veterans of every war and of peacetime. In addition, the public is invited to participate in the Veterans Day service at the Washington County Historical Society Memorial on the corner of 5th and Poplar Street on Sunday, November 11th, 2018, at 10:45 a.m." Thank you to all veterans here tonight and those with us in spirit. I would now like to introduce Pastor Caleb Roth, who will give us an invocation this evening. Pastor?
It's good to be with you tonight. I'm going to pray now, and I would encourage you, to the extent that you would affirm the words I pray tonight, would you pray along with me? My Father, I praise You, the only God, the one great God of highest heaven. Though You are holy and separated from desperate sinners like myself, in Your grace, You sent Your sinless Son, Jesus Christ, into this world. Crushed by the humility that This produces, I confess that too often I fail to appreciate the great sacrifice and service of those who have given so much for my freedom, failing to fully grasp the greatest eternal atoning sacrifice of Your Son, but also failing to honor the immediate and present sacrifice of those who seek to secure my earthly freedoms. I thank You now for those who so recently have sacrificed their time, energy, and comfort for my good and the greater good of this nation. I thank You as well for those who have fought and have given their lives. I pray in the name of Your Son, Jesus Christ, who said, 'Blessed are the peacemakers,' even as I recognize that this same Savior proclaimed that He Himself had not come to bring peace, but a sword, through the very gospel He preached. Now, Lord, while Your people wrestle with their own personal obligations during conflict, even as the brave Sergeant Alvin York weighed heavily his own personal objections, may those who enter the fray continue to do so with a settled conscience. Now, please grant the wisdom that realizes that peace so often is the fruit of conflict. Grant continued grace for thankfulness for those who have gone before, while pausing, even at this time, for Thanksgiving, for those who have fought in that great war, men greatly affected by their knowledge of You, as they held closely their responsibility to their countrymen. I ask these things in the name of Your Son, Jesus Christ, our Savior. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. I'd like to introduce Mr. Scott Mindle, who is no stranger to our veterans ceremony. Been here the last couple of years. He's a big hit. That's why we keep inviting him back. It's not because no one else will say yes. Scott has his bachelor's degree from Carroll College in History and Secondary Education, a master's from UW-Milwaukee in U.S. History. He is now in his 25th year of teaching at the West Bend High School, where he teaches Global Studies and Advanced Placement Human Geography. He's a co-advisor for National Honor Society, assistant coach for East Boys Track Team. He has served as a Social Studies Department Chair, member of the Superintendent's Advisory Team, member of the High School Building Leadership Team, a member of the District's Social Studies Curriculum Committee. He and his wife also have two sons, both of whom graduated from West Bend East. We're very pleased to have Mr. Scott Mindle return with us tonight. Good evening.
First of all, I would like to begin by extending a very heartfelt thank you to all of the veterans in the audience for your service. I am truly honored and humbled by the sacrifices that you have made and are making for our country. I would also like to again thank all those involved for inviting me back once again to address you tonight. It was exactly 100 years ago that American soldiers were fighting in the deadliest battle that America had ever waged. In this battle, over 26,000 American soldiers were killed and over 95,000 more were wounded. It was deadlier than the Battle of the Bulge, the Invasion of Normandy, the Battle of Okinawa, and more than three times the men died in this battle than in the battles of Gettysburg, Spotsylvania, and Chickamauga combined. Sadly, however, most Americans cannot name this battle, much less the war in which it occurred. The Moos-Argon Offensive, otherwise known as the Battle of the Argonne Forest. This battle waged from September 26th to November 11th, 1918. The United States' role in this final offensive of World War I helped to bring about the armistice on the day we are now observing as Veterans Day. In this year of the centennial of the end of World War I, my task tonight is to give you a sort of history lesson. But don't worry, there's not going to be a test or a quiz that follows. I wasn't that prepared. Tonight, what I'm going to do is review with you the impact of World War I on Wisconsin and its overall national and global historical impact. Wisconsin's proud military heritage dates back to the Civil War, when men from Wisconsin formed the core of the famed Iron Brigade with men from Indiana and Michigan. That tradition continued, with our state sending thousands of men to fight in Puerto Rico and in the Philippines in the Spanish-American War at the turn of the 20th century. These men would eventually form the Wisconsin National Guard. They went on to serve along the Mexican border in 1916, where they gained invaluable experience. Despite that solid history of military service, however, there was some cause for doubt as to Wisconsin's willingness to give full support to the United States' war effort once the United States entered World War I in 1917. First, more than one-quarter of our state's population was of German or Austrian descent, leading some to wonder how eager they would be to possibly be fighting against their relatives. The large Wisconsin-German-American population had exhibited a strong cultural unity, based on pride in German accomplishments, also promoted by a strong German-language press. America's participation in the war caused a backlash against Wisconsin-German-Americans. During the period of 1917 to 1918, some Wisconsin schools refused to teach German. German-language books were burned publicly, and anyone with a German name was a target for harassment. Even some words of German origin were temporarily changed during the war. Sauerkraut became liberty cabbage. German measles became liberty measles. Hamburgers became liberty sandwiches. And frankfurters became liberty sausages before they became hot dogs. Secondly, one of the nation's leading voices speaking out against American involvement in World War I was prominent Wisconsin Senator Robert M. LaFollette. LaFollette opposed American entry into the war, maintaining that the aims of none of the European belligerents were of concern to the United States in order to justify our participation. LaFollette's opposition to the war brought him very fierce criticism. He was targeted for censure by the U.S. Senate, denounced as a traitor in the media, and ostracized by his friends in Washington, D.C. However, the citizens of Wisconsin resolutely answered their nation's call to arms. For example, Wisconsin led all other states in recruiting and equipping its National Guard, and it was the first to report in the four draft registrations that were held. The Wisconsin National Guard combined with the Michigan National Guard to form the 32nd Division, the Red Arrow Division. This division constituted the largest concentration of Wisconsin soldiers in World War I. The men and women of the Wisconsin National Guard continue today to proudly wear the Red Arrow. More than 122,000 Wisconsinites served in World War I, and more than 2,000 ended up giving their lives. In addition to the soldiers that Wisconsin provided to the war effort, its fields and factories were also mobilized for the war effort. Agricultural production increased by almost 25%, and factories throughout the state worked tirelessly to increase and speed up production. In addition, Wisconsin residents exceeded every liberty loan quota and war drive activity, which amounted to an average of $145 for every single Wisconsinite. We're also the first state to implement Wheatless and Meatless Days, that were proved to be so successful that that idea was adopted by the federal government. World War I, the Great War, had far-reaching effects on the United States and the world. The war changed America, or at the very least, quickened the pace of this change. Despite President Wilson's pledge to keep the United States out of the European War, he entered the war with the promises of this war being the war to end all wars, and it being a war to make the world safe for democracy. These justifications were an extension of President Wilson's progressive-era philosophy. This was evidenced in his peace plan, his Plan for Peace, his 14 points, which, for the most part, were never realized. In the United States, the war actually encouraged the rise of intolerance. Anti-German and later anti-immigrant attitudes abounded. If you are of German ancestry, you would better prove your loyalty to the U.S. by doing things like buying Liberty Bonds. Also, a number of anti-immigration laws were passed in the 1920s that greatly restricted the flow of immigrants into the United States. These discrimination campaigns flowed also toward African-Americans, Jewish-Americans, and Catholic-Americans. The Ku Klux Klan experienced a resurgence in the wake of World War I. There was also a rise of intolerance against minority political groups, such as socialists and communists, that led to the Red Scare of the 1920s. This was fueled by outspoken leaders like socialist Eugene Debs, and also fueled by the Communist Revolution that took place in Russia in 1917. The war helped lead to the passage of the 18th Amendment, prohibition. How, you ask? In 1917, President Wilson instituted a temporary wartime prohibition on the production of alcohol to save grain for food production. Also, the Selective Service Act of 1917 included controls on the use of liquor by men in uniform. The prohibition movement used the war, then, to increase pressure for the passage of a constitutional amendment regarding alcohol. The war also led to the change in the status of women. The 19th Amendment, which gave women the right to vote, was adopted shortly after the war. This was bolstered by the fact that during the war, women found themselves working in areas that were previously reserved for men. Approximately a million women filled the vacancies that were left by men who were now in uniform. The war also changed America's role in the world. In the years preceding the war, President Wilson tried very carefully to keep the United States out. However, after feeling the impact of Germany's campaign of unrestricted submarine warfare and the discovery of the Zimmerman Telegram, which revealed Germany's attempt to recruit Mexico to attack the United States, the United States eventually entered the conflict. For the first time in our history, the United States joined a coalition in order to fight a war that was not on our own soil or of our own making. This effectively launched a new philosophy in U.S. foreign policy, the idea that foreign affairs can threaten the United States. At the same time, the atrocity of war caused a retreat to isolationism by the United States. The enormous number of military casualties and the prolonged length of the war brought a newfound bitterness towards war itself. It had not turned out to be a war of adventure or movement, but rather a war of attrition. The total amount of civilian and military casualties is estimated to be around 40 million Because of the economic disruption in Europe, it allowed the U.S. to become the world's leading creditor nation and a major industrial power. World War I also transformed the nature of modern warfare itself. New technology was introduced in the war to kill people more effectively and more efficiently, things such as tanks, submarines, airplanes, machine guns, and poisonous gas. It also had social consequences, such as the worldwide influenza epidemic that killed over 25 million people. Close quarters and massive troop movements of the war helped fuel the spread of this disease. Unfortunately, this year sadly also marks the 100th anniversary of that deadly event. The end of World War I actually helped to lead to World War II. When Hitler began rearming Germany in the 1930s, both Great Britain and France were leery of another bloody conflict. The casualties of World War I actually helped lead to the appeasement that was felt prior to World War II. Because the victors had paid so dearly, their resentment and anger displayed in the peace provisions helped to ensure that it was, in fact, not a war to end all wars. In Europe, World War I led to the restructuring of the political order. The war led to the dissolution of Europe's landed empires, such as the Russian Empire, the German Empire, the Austro-Hungarian Empire, and the Ottoman Empire. The European map was transformed into a patchwork of small ethnically-based countries, with nine new countries being formed as a result. In the Middle East, the British and French took over lands once controlled by the Ottoman Empire. Many of these lands would eventually yield great reserves of oil. The British had promised both Arabs and Jews control of what was then known as Palestine. But after the war, this promise to both was left unfulfilled. Since then, many crises in the Middle East would eventually follow. Unfortunately, many people don't think that World War I was all that important. However, hopefully, as I've demonstrated, it was immensely significant and served as the precursor to many other events that would follow. Author Stephen Mintz states that, quote, "Just about everything that happened in the remainder of the century was, in one way or another, a result of World War I." One cannot fully understand the Second World War without understanding the Great War. The world would never be the same. Once again, on behalf of the students, the faculty, and staff members of the West Bend School District, I would once again like to offer my thanks to all the veterans of all generations for their tremendous sacrifice of service to our nation. Some of you may know that I began collecting the names of former West Bend High School students and staff members who are military veterans. I began that four years ago. On Veterans Day 2015, I had collected 250 names. The list, as of yesterday, the list currently stands over 1,760 names, including the names of the graduating classes from 1897, World War I veterans, all the way to the class of 2018. Now, I'm not a math major. That's why I t- Now, I'm not a math major, that's why I teach social studies. If you are counting, that's over 120 years of veteran service. The names, along with photos of many of those veterans, have been made into a film. That film plays continuously during every school day in the main hallway of the high schools in order to recognize and honor the service of our own hometown veterans. I would like to invite you to join me after the ceremony or showing of that film in one of the adjoining rooms here. And I would like to finish by saying thank you once again, and God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Middel, not only for the presentation tonight, but for the veterans' tribute that you continue to add to, very impressive. And as Scott mentioned, when we're done with our ceremony tonight, right around the corner, the museum, in combination with Common Sense Citizens of Washington County invite us in for some coffee, some refreshments, and also a viewing of the veterans' tribute. And with that, I am very pleased and proud to introduce our keynote speaker tonight, Mr. Thomas J. Tradewell, who was elected Commander-in-Chief of the Veterans of Foreign Wars on August 20, 2009, at the VFW's 110th National Convention. Is it correct for me to...? No, I've got a whole lot more to talk to you about. I just want to make sure I'm addressing you properly. Is it Commander or Commander-in-Chief? Commander-in-Chief. Commander-in-Chief Tradewell, there's a bunch of, I don't know if you guys noticed, a bunch of military guys in the room that wouldn't appreciate it if I addressed him incorrectly. So, Commander-in-Chief Tradewell served in the US Army from 1966 through 1968 and earned VFW eligibility while serving with B Company, 26th Engineers, 198th Light Infantry Brigade, the American Division, in South Vietnam as a demolition specialist. His decorations include the Vietnam Service Medal, Vietnam Campaign Medal, Purple Heart, and Good Conduct Medal. Commander-in-Chief joined the VFW in 1968 at Post 6498 in Milwaukee, where he was in 2003 through 2005. Commander-in-Chief earned an associate's degree in industrial safety. He retired from Briggs and Stratton in 1998 as a metrology laboratory technician. Did I pronounce that right? After 30 years of service to Briggs and Stratton, he's a member of the Military Order of the Purple Heart, Military Order of the Cootie, American Legion, Disabled Americans, Disabled American Veterans, Vietnam Veterans of America, and Combat Veterans Motorcycle Association. Tom and his wife Tracy have a son Gary, and their four grandchildren reside in Wisconsin's best city, which is West Bend. Commander-in-Chief married Sharon in 1966, and they make their home in Sussex, Wisconsin. Let me be clear, Tom's son Gary's wife's name is Tracy. Did I get that right? I think I might have said that incorrectly. He only has one wife. Tradewell married Sharon in 1966, they make their home in Sussex. It's your fault for making this so long. With that, I'm very proud to introduce Commander-in-Chief Tradewell. Sir?
Mayor, I said you could shorten it to any length you wanted. You know, the only important part is that I was elected at the 110th Convention. And the fact is, the VFW has been serving veterans for over 119 years now, so that's the important part. Thank you, Mayor, for that kind introduction. Mr. Middel, that lesson, that history lesson, was fantastic, and it has the profound effects on this area and the country. It's fantastic. But keeping that video running at school and reminding people is almost like being in the VFW. In the VFW, every day is Veterans Day, and in your classroom, it must be very similar. I want to thank all of you for taking the time, especially you scouts up there. It's good to see the scouts up on top, keeping an eye on us and taking part in this veterans' ceremony. It's interesting that people have busy schedules, and even if you're retired, you find so many things to do, you always wonder how you make time for those things that are important. So, all of you that made time in your busy schedule to be here tonight, I applaud you, and I thank you for being here. You know, World War I was 100 years ago, and this is the 100th anniversary. And I think we should take a minute, you've all been pretty quiet tonight, but we should have a minute of silence to recognize and be inspired by all of those that we remember and who paid the ultimate sacrifice. As Commander-in-Chief of the VFW, I did a lot of things. I'm proud to say that I had the high honor and great privilege to meet the last living veteran of World War I, Mr. Frank Buckles. I met him in 2008. He was a very young, 103 years old. He was full of life, could tell you stories about his service, and his daughter was along with him. She was 55 years old, so Mr. Buckles was pretty active later in life. I did present him with a VFW Gold Medal of Merit. Frank joined the Army at the age of 17. Back then, like you say, there were many people that did not want to go in because of their ethnic background. But at the age of 17, he faked his age and got into the Army. He was underage, but he was very enthusiastic. He became an ambulance driver in England and France. Mr. Buckles passed away a few years later at the ripe age of 107. And Mr. Buckles, if you're up there watching us, thank you for your service. World War I, commonly known as the Great War, would ultimately shape the rest of America's 20th century, influencing all the areas of our lives: civil rights, women's suffrage, military traditions, protocol, technology, medicine, and soldier benefits. The war ushered in a century of profound social and economic change. The assassination on June 28, 1914, that sounds like a long time ago. Archduke Franz Ferdinand, the heir to the Austrian-Hungarian throne, would spark the Great War. However, the United States remained reluctant and would not become involved in the conflict until several years later. As the war in Europe erupted, World War I casualties, as Scott had mentioned, soared into the millions. An extensive system of trenches were formed, that's where you heard of trench warfare. Lethal new technologies were unleashed, and for the first time, a major war was fought not only on land and in the sea, but in the air and under the sea. During the initial years of the war, President Woodrow Wilson advocated for peace, attempting to keep the United States out of entering the war. But in early 1917, those German submarines launched unrestricted submarine attacks on our merchant ships, around the same time the US had heard about the Zimmerman Telegram in which Germany tried to persuade Mexico to enter in an alliance against the United States. On April 2, 1917, Woodrow Wilson asked Congress to declare war on Germany stating, "The world must be made safe for democracy." And on April 6, Congress voted to declare war on Germany. Bringing the United States into the war added an additional weight of the Allies and material that the Central Powers could not hope to match. On November 11, 1918, armistice was signed by the Germans. At the Paris Peace Conference, which opened on January of 1919 and included the heads of British, French, and Italian governments, President Wilson helped negotiate the Treaty of Versailles. The agreement included the Charter for the League of Nations, an organization intended to arbitrate international disputes and prevent future wars. While the VFW roots trace back to 1899, it wasn't until 1914, the same year that World War I began, that the VFW was officially born. It was America's first entrance into the Great War, and the more than 4.7 million Americans who served in support of it that truly shaped our organization and its lasting mission of service. More than 116,000 made the ultimate sacrifice while serving in World War I, and another 204,000 were wounded. While they were fighting halfway around the world, the VFW was here at home, helping and fighting for them. The wartime gaps threatened our soldiers on the battlefield, and the VFW pulled together to make sure that the equipment they needed was provided and the Army had appropriate resources. When men and women fighting overseas could not protect their property rights at home, the VFW ensured that their homes and their land would remain theirs. When proper health care, employment, and their benefits were threatened, we fought to hold a grateful nation accountable, to ensure that that nation that creates veterans also takes care of them when they return home. The VFW was built on a foundation of advocacy for veterans, service members, and their families. But another founding principle, and one of equal importance, is to never forget, and that's why we're here tonight. You must never forget the selfless service, the great sacrifice of those who paid the highest price for freedom. Never forget their families, and never forget the countless others in distant lands who owe their freedom to our doughboys. In 2017, the VFW joined other service organizations in supporting the World War I Centennial Commission to honor the heroism of America's veterans who fought during the Great War. During a period of, from last April, April 6, 2017, to next July, 2019, the Commission intends to remember and honor World War veterans for their service and their sacrifice during the Great War. The official launch of events was held again on April 6, 2017, at the World War I Memorial in Kansas City, a little more than a mile from our national headquarters. Our national headquarters has remained a close neighbor to the site of the World War I Museum and the memorial in Kansas City for over 90 years. The VFW National Headquarters was proud to be the presenting sponsor of the Centennial Commemoration, also presenting $100,000 donation to the Commission for preserving the history of the Great War. The VFW has also been a proud donator to the US World War I Centennial Commission for the creation of the World War I Memorial in Washington DC, a long overdue tribute. Throughout 2017 and 2018, the VFW has been commemorating the centennial of World War I with events across the nation and overseas, leading up to the 100th anniversary of the signing of the armistice in this November, that's in a week. Each page of America's history tells the story of the sacrifices of the men and women in our armed forces that they've made, and each colorful page illustrates the legacy of their accomplishments. Along with freedom, there will always be a price paid. We are thankful for every service member willing to ensure evil and tyranny will not prevail. Their contributions, their sacrifices, their steadfast devotion to duty, God, country, and to their families have provided us with examples of true character that we need to emulate every day of our lives. Today, we continue to be inspired by their dignity, their perseverance, and by the memory of their actions. As we leave here today, may we be resolved and determined to serve our nation and our fellow man as selflessly as they did. Thanks again for being here tonight. May God bless each one of you. May God continue to bless those soldiers around the world that protect us and keep our peace. May God bless the United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you, Commander-in-Chief Tradewell, for your service to the country and for your service here tonight. We appreciate it. Now, I'd like to invite another gentleman who is no stranger to our festivities. We all know him by his stature and by his voice. Mr. Joel Hausmann is going to lead us in a song. I think we all know it.
First of all, I want to thank everyone taking time out from their busy days to be here tonight to honor our veterans. And now, I'd like you to join me in singing "God Bless America" for the greatest country in the world, the United States of America. God bless America, land that I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the night with the light from above. From the mountains to the prairies, to the oceans white with foam. God bless America, my home sweet home. God bless America, my home sweet home. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Joel wanted me to remind all of you tomorrow's an important day, Election Day, something that our servicemen and women have fought and died for, so he asked me to remind the group to get out and vote and do your duty, because folks have fought and earned it for us. And that brings us to the end of our program this evening. Please take a look inside your programs, lots of individuals, organizations, community members, businesses have joined in the evening tonight. A special thank you again to the Museum of Wisconsin Art, Victoria Lewis of the City West Bend staff and others, along with Common Sense Citizens of Washington County. And finally, on behalf of a very grateful common council, on behalf of a very grateful city and country, I sincerely like to thank you, all of our veterans here tonight. Thanks for those of you that continue to help us all remember those who have fought for our freedoms. And once again, please join us right around the corner for some coffee, some refreshments, and a look at Mr. Middel's high school tribute to our veterans. And with that, I'd like to adjourn the City of West Bend Common Council meeting. Have a great evening, everyone. Good night, and thanks again for coming.